Good early evening, everyone. I would like to call the Lindup School District 92 Board Meeting to Order at 5:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Board Member Joyner Harret.
Present.
Board Member Victoria Arrington.
Present.
Board Member Griffin.
Present.
Board Member Dawson. Absent. Board Member Hannah. Absent. Board Member Taylor.
Present.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Present.
Thank you.
At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we're going to pause for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Moving right along to the public hearing on the 2021 budget. Mr. Baranik.
Good evening, board members, administrators, and community members. Today, we're having our public hearing for the FY21 budget. It is the 2021 school year. If we look at our calendar that we have in September, we have our public hearing. The board will adopt the budget, and then everything will be posted to the website, and everything will be submitted to ISB following all guidance that is necessary for approving the budget. If we move to the next slide, I just want to reiterate what are the assumptions that I used to create this budget on the revenue side of things. Number one, if you remember, we did apply for the Property Tax Relief Grant. We did get that last year. We abated $380,000 worth of property taxes back to the community. That means we gave it back. That was assumption number one. Assumption two is tax collection. Our current collection rate that we had in the 1920 was at 97% collection. This year, I decreased at 5% due to the uncertainty of the pandemic. And being that I believe that the collection rate's going to be a little slow coming in with it, and it's in there at 92%, very conservative at the 92% collection rate. The third thing that we looked at was the tax appeals. This is a reassessment year in Cook County, and I'm anticipating a lot of appeals for local property taxes. So we did budget in tax appeals within this budget, being that it is a reassessment year, and I believe a lot of people in the community will be appealing their taxes. Now, for the 2020 levy, the CPI factor that will be used for the levy that will be submitted in December will be 2.3%. So that's going to be a little slight increase on our levy that we have. And then with the abatement of our property taxes that we did under assumption number one, as part of that, we received an additional $300,000 in our evidence-based funding formula from the state. And then the last thing that's going to be pretty very tight, I think, with this year's budget, is going to be the state payments that we receive for categorical funding. I was on a webinar today, and the state has backlogged $9 billion in payments. So this is something that we have to be very conservative with. And in the budget, we have budgeted still two payments from last year, and then one payment from this year to make three payments. Normally, a district will receive four payments. So this is something that is kind of a very conservative approach with the state categoricals. And then the very last one is our grant funding that we have. Pre-K, Title I, Title II, Title IV, and IDEA. Those are all at the same levels that they were at from FY20. If we move on to the next slide, we're going to look at the expenditure assumptions. In this current budget, I have 3% across the board for all positions out there. That's roughly $120,000 increase from the previous year. Our benefits came in at 4.3% on the HMO increase and a 6.7% increase on the PPO with an estimated increase of $18,000. Our purchase services, I have an increase of 3% across the board, with the biggest one being our special education placement. That is a very big number for the students who are outplaced on that, and that's something that we have to continue to keep tracking on it. And then obviously, we have the other different purchase services, like our food service roughly went up 3% on it. And we'll continue to monitor different things that are coming. But some of the other significant costs that were built into the expenditures, the pace roof, I know we went back and forth with that earlier on, in I believe, May-June with what our portion would be. It ended up being $60,000. We did need to get playgrounds resurfaced out on our playgrounds. That's a $45,000 cost to repair them. And then, of course, with the transition back from remote to in-person, we have an additional $75,000 in there for PPE, not knowing exactly what we're going to need with a particular transition plan back. So it is put in the budget to have some cushion on it. And then with the additional technology that was needed for the remote learning, there is $175,000 additional out there for Chromebooks and teacher computers for replacements that will be needed at the end of the year. So that concludes the summary of assumptions that were used for the revenue and expense. If we look at the financial summary, this puts it into more of a big-picture snapshot of each fund, what the revenue will be coming in and what the expenditures are going out. This is a very conservative approach. And if we look at the bottom, you will see that the fund balance will be decreasing $627,000 roughly amongst all the funds. The positive thing is, is even at budgeting all these various assumptions out there and taking a very conservative approach, the fund balance for the operating funds is still at 11 months. If we move on to the next slide, this is kind of the reason why we took a very conservative approach. There is a very, very uncertain, this is a very, very uncertain time with the state, with all these backlog bills that they have. So we have to be very conservative with the amount of money that we would be receiving from the state. So we were looking at that very closely and wanted to make sure that we didn't overestimate the revenue that we would get from the state. And then, of course, our federal dollars that we get, you know, we got to be cautious with that, too. And it is a very uncertain time with this pandemic with the expenses, being that things could get pretty significant, you know, depending on if we go back with the transition plan, moving forward, exactly what type of cleaning supplies, what type of devices will we need, what additional cleaning, additional PPE, additional technology. Like I said, so this is a very, very conservative approach, 11 months still with the reserves. However, if we move to the next slide, with the board recommending to have remote learning from August through January, there is some cost savings that we are seeing during this remote session. So if we look at these top six items that we have, extracurriculars. Currently, right now, we do not have the extra duties going for after-school activities and our sports programs. So we are saving a little bit of money during this first half of the school year. If we do transition back, you will see some cost for those, but it also depends on exactly what we'll run and if they try to do condensed seasons or try to get all different activities going once we go back. But at this particular time, we are saving the savings on that. We also are not going on any field trips. So we have savings on the cost of the actual field trip and what our transportation costs would be for it. With not being in session, we also are saving on substitute teachers that are out there. And then, of course, if we look at the board budget, due to the pandemic, a lot of the major conferences have been canceled. So there is savings on your conference costs and the professional development costs. And then the last thing that we have is our utilities. With not being in the building and having sensors for occupancy, we are saving money on electricity. We're also saving money on paper products, which would be our paper towels and our toiletries. And then, of course, we don't have the kids in the building occupying it, which saves on all the drinking water and all the flushing of the toilets. So you do have those cost savings. If you factored all that into this whole remote session and looking at a big picture, we're probably operating at more of a 13- to 14-month cash reserve currently and probably will end somewhere near that. But like I said, this is going to be a very tricky year, and we have to continuously monitor all the expenses and all the revenue that will be coming through this particular year. But I wanted to give a big snapshot of what the current budget looks like. If there is any questions at this time, we'd like to answer those, or that would conclude our public hearing.
I know that Ms. Arrington and I received this presentation at our finance meeting. So I'm not sure if other board members have questions. I know that we talked in detail at our last finance meeting.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I would like to thank Mr. Baranik for such a thorough job. Much appreciated.
One additional thing I wanted to say, Mr. Baranik, and I definitely agree with Ms. Griffin as well, Board Member Griffin. But prior to the board meeting, Governor Pritzker talked about the significant deficit that we're in because of the lack of income because of the, you know, coronavirus. And he said that they're going to have 5% cuts this year and 10% next year. So thank you for being conservative, because, you know, we're going to need it. There's more to come this year as well as the end of the year. So if there are no more additional questions, we'll just move right along. Thank you very much, Mr. Baranik.
Good job, Baranik.
Spotlight on success?
So our spotlight on success tonight will be on Black Lives Matter. I'm so excited about this opportunity to even be able to share this and highlight, and I think you guys are going to really enjoy what you see this evening. Our presenter is Mrs. Bell and the eighth-grade students. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me here. I am co-teaching with Mr. Lazarus, and we have brought two students with us today to tell you about the Journalism Project in eighth-grade ELA to address student agency and student voice in the context of our most important social events of our time. The newspaper fosters connection in our remote community through the tangible written word. Ayana, or excuse me, Journey Johnson will be our first student speaker.
Hi, my name is Journey Johnson, and I'm an eighth-grade student. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. I'm looking forward to sharing with you what we are learning in our ELA class. In our class, we were asked to write a newspaper article. We are using current events and how we feel about them to share our opinions in writing. Writing is powerful and allows us to be heard, even as middle school students. We created a student newspaper which provides us with a way to communicate with the Lindup and Broadview communities. The article is wrote for the newspaper is titled "Coronavirus Pandemic Creates Hardship on Middle Schoolers." I wrote this article because this year is different from many other school years. We have never started school remotely, and my friends and I feel the impact. Although it is not what we are used to, it is providing us flexibility and allowing us to work to get better together. As students, we are able to take more responsibility for our learning remotely. It is different from remote learning last spring, and it is teaching us to take ownership of our learning. Taking ownership of my learning will help me to be successful this year and in my future. I would like to introduce you to Ayana Haynes, who will share a little more about our class.
Hi, I'm Ayana Haynes. I have never written for a newspaper before, and I am very proud to be on the first page with my article on what it means to be Black in America from my point of view. I was inspired by the events that happened involving Jacob Blake the weekend before I wrote this article. What is necessary in America today is to have a voiced opinion, not in all cases, but most, especially if it is an informed opinion. Because there's a difference between an informed opinion and a formulated opinion. What I mean by this is having an informed opinion about what other people have told you and other opinions put altogether. A formulated opinion is having just what you know and stating only that alone and not allowing your mind to go past that. We are learning even more than before because of our journalism project and because of the student-directed nature of remote learning. We hope that you all will be able to read our newspaper. We have another edition coming very soon.
Very good. Does that conclude the presentation?
Yes, thank you. We all, that was our two students selected to tell you about their articles. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Our first issue, I should add, our first issue just came out in print today, and I hope that you'll be able to see it soon. We're going to keep building this newspaper up, but the students are already using their voice to communicate the issues that matter most to them, Black Lives Matter being high among those.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I would like to say that I did receive your first issue, and I was so impressed by that.
Good. You were too.
I couldn't believe it was the eighth grade that actually put that together. It was wonderful.
They did a phenomenal job. I'm incredibly proud to bring them here today to talk to you about it. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Bell, Ayana, as well as Journey, I just want to thank you for allowing the board and the community a little window into what you all do. It makes me feel a little bit closer to knowing what goes on at school, especially because of the state of affairs in this world, and to know that you all are really dealing with it in a great way, writing about it, speaking about it, working together. So thank you for just sharing that with us.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here tonight.
Of course, of course.
Any other board members?
Thank you. Thank you, Journey and Ayana. Very informative. You did an outstanding job.
This is Board Member Hannah. Good job, ladies.
Then I have something written from Board Member Ms. Williams Wilford. Congratulations on your first newsletter. Thank you for sharing. We appreciate you all. Then Director of Special Services, Mr. Evan Whitehead, he says, "Everyone, great job." So thank you all very much. You make us Lindup proud. Okay. Thank you again. Moving right along to item G, public comments. Do we have any, Mrs. Suarez?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Upcoming events? As well as correspondence, Ms. Griffin?
Yes, I have Friday, September 18th, Lindup Student Outreach.
Is there any correspondence? I know that we read.
There was no.
Okay. It's okay. No correspondence? Ms. Griffin, there was none, Mrs. Suarez, correct?
Correct, there was no correspondence.
All right, thank you. I know that we read the upcoming events in silence.
Oh, thanks.
No problem. Thank you so much, Ms. Griffin. Okay. We'll go on to the new business. We need a recommendation to approve the payroll, please.
This is Vicky Arrington, Board Member. I make a motion that the board approve the Lindup District 92 payroll for August 19th, 2020 through September 15th, 2020, and the amount of $274,384.33.
Thank you. In a second, please.
Board Member Williams Wilford, a second.
Are there any questions or concerns? If there are none, need a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Joyner Harret.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I now need a motion to approve the activity account reconciliation, please.
Board Member Williams Wilford, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead. Board Member Williams Wilford, I make a motion that we approve the, let's see it right, I make a motion that we approve the activity account reconciliation for August 2020, 2020.
Thank you. In a second, please.
Second, Board Member Vice President Vicky Arrington.
Are there any questions or concerns? If there are none, roll call Ms. please, Mrs. Suarez, please.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Joyner Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the accounts payable, please, for August 19th, 2020 to September 15th, 2020.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion that the board approve the Lindup District 92 accounts payable for August 19th, 2020 through September 15th, 2020 in the amount of $215,081.19.
In a second, please.
A second, Board Vice President Vicky Arrington.
Any questions or concerns? I know I did review it, and Ms. Arrington went into Lindup and reviewed them personally. Thank you, Mrs. Arrington, for that.
My pleasure.
If there are no further questions or concerns, roll call, please.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Absent.
Board Member Joyner Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the regular open session meeting minutes for August 18th, please. Mr. Dawson, can you make that motion for me?
I, yes, Board Member Dawson, I recommend the approval of the regular open session meeting minutes for August 18th, 2020.
In a second, please.
Your own group is a second.
Thank you. Any questions or corrections or concern? There are none, roll call, please.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Joyner Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular closed session meeting minutes for August 18th, 2020. In a second, please.
Second, Cheryl Griffin.
Any questions or concerns or corrections? There are none, roll call, please.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Absent.
Board Member Joyner Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a recommendation to approve the post-FY21 compensation reports.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion that the board approve the post, approve to post the F1/F21 compensation reports, including administrator compensation report, IMRF total compensation over $75,000 report, and the F20 EIS administrator and teacher salary and benefit report.
In a second, please.
A second, Board Member Vicky Arrington.
Thank you all. Any questions or concerns? Better yet, Mr. Baranik?
Sure. With Public Act 97069, districts have to post these various reports annually. With it, the first one is the administrator compensation report on that for '21. It has all of the base salaries plus any board-paid benefits on it. And then the second one is IMRF employees who are non-TRS. We have to post within six days of adopting the budget, and on there is base salary plus any employer-paid benefits on it. And then the third one that's out there is the EIS Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report. This is also base salary plus any board-paid benefits. So the board-paid benefits for this one is your TRS, medical, dental, and life insurance. If we move to the next page, these are just snapshots of what will be posted on our website for it. The first one is the administrator one. The second one is the IMRF over $75,000. And then the third one will be the FY20 EIS report that has the administrator and teachers on it. And these are annually, have to be viewed by the board, and then posted to our websites accordingly as per that Public Act.
Thank you. Are there any questions at all? Thank you very much, Ms. Baranik. If there are none, need a roll call, please.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Joyner Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Need a motion now to approve the contract for Tana and Stolztec Inspired Citizens, please.
Well, I remember Vicky Arrington. I make a motion that the board approve the contract for Cavita, Tana, and Tana and Steve Stolztec Inspired Citizens in the amount of $12,000 to be paid from the Title I grant.
In a second, please. Your own group is a second. A second by Mr. Hannah. Okay. And that'll be Dr. Betts.
Good evening, Board of Education and Community. Um, we are looking to use the services of Inspire Citizens, specifically Cavita, Tana, and Steve Sostak, um, for the purpose of doing more projects similar to what Ms. Bell just presented you. Their work aligns to shared leadership, and the key driver of their work is instruction. Next slide, Josh. So the scope of their work is shown on this slide, and we are looking to, um, to use the, um, time that we have with them to support interdisciplinary instruction, and to build a really robust, solid, strong, remote learning program, um, where we can incorporate a level of global thinking and community-based thinking for the purpose of trying to make positive changes, and having our students take an active role in that. And that concludes my presentation on that one.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from any board members?
Yeah, Board Member Dawson, just a quick question. Um, I'm reading it correctly that, uh, the last school year, they actually did pro bono work for us, uh, ten to fifteen hours over twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, is that correct?
That's correct. When we went into remote learning in March, um, Mr. Whitehead was key in trying to develop a program to support our staff with their, um, like, well-being and emotional needs, and so, um, he worked with Cavita to, um, develop the Alphabetic Survival Guide to COVID-nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you give us a little feedback? Thanks very much for that information, Mr. Dawson. That was really important. Um, any feedback about the experience?
In terms of what staff say about working with Cavita and Inspire Citizens?
Absolutely.
Yes, um, so a lot of their work is, um, pushing us to the level of, if you think about our conversations of, about Blue Ribbon, or um, international baccalaureate programs, the IB schools, the idea of academizing and bringing together our staff around our student, um, pledge, our mission, and our vision as an organization, where we talk specifically about um, becoming global citizens and building our identities based on how we relate to ourselves, our community, and our world. And the teachers have a lot of resources in front of them that can do this, um, so the, the feedback was quite positive overall. Um, we covered a lot of ground with them. Um, they were here with us in June as well for, uh, a teacher institute, um, during our summer session, and, um, feedback is basically that we're grateful for the information. There is a lot, though, so, um, you know, if we're able to continue a little bit, we're going to take it in smaller chunks, um, because we do recognize that it's quite a shift from where we've been before.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions from board members? Thank you very much, Ms., uh, Dr. Betts. Roll call, please.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carrying. We now need a motion to approve the contract for, uh, Ms. Jessica Lyons, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the contract for Ms. Jessica Lyons, data map consultant, in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars to be paid from the Title One Grant.
Thank you. In a second, please?
Board Member Vicky Arrington, I second that.
Thank you very much. Dr. Betts?
Thank you. Um, Jessica Lyons has worked with us for several years, and her work aligns to shared leadership and student support, specifically in terms of helping us to connect the quantitative data that we collect in our assessments to the qualitative conversations that we have to confirm that we know our students deeply, for the purpose of, um, driving their instruction, um, individually. Can you go to the next slide, Josh? So here's the scope of work from twenty nineteen. Um, we've been kind of gradually, over the years, increasing our hours with Ms. Lyons, um, but we believe that at this point, we're probably equipped to, uh, pare that down a bit, and so, um, we're going to ask her to specifically support us with data governance and data coaching, and specifically to, um, work with our admin team to do executive summaries of the data, so that we can think a little bit more deeply about what the stats say about our students, and then what that confirms about what we already know. Because we don't want to just lean on one thing. We want to be able to have a robust scope of items that we can use to support what we're doing. And that's all I have on that one.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from board members? There are none, roll call, please?
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We now need a, a motion for the contract of Anthony Mohammed, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the contract for Anthony Mohammed, New Frontier, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars to be paid from the Title One Grant.
Thank you. In a second, please?
I second, here.
Thank you. Dr. Betts, you're up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, yep, thank you. So, um, Dr. Mohammed's work aligns to culture and climate, and his key driver is school supports. And next slide, Josh. Dr. Mohammed is well-known for his work with, um, helping to develop professional learning communities, but he also has quite a a strong element of social justice and, um, equity that flows into the logical things that he says. So he speaks a language that Lindup has been developing for a few years, and so it makes sense to bring him in to, um, keep giving us some touchpoints throughout the year, where he would address the entire staff, and specifically focus on the concept of transforming school culture, and what that looks like at every layer of the organization, and specifically, um, how important it is that our instruction and our conversations mirror what we say our mission is, and what we say we value, and that would be his role. That's all I have on him.
Is it significantly different, Dr., I mean, yeah, Dr. Betts, from the message from the other group that was given this information about inspired citizenship? So they're significantly different, right, the two approaches between Mr. Mohammed? And, uh, mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine. You, I'm just, you go right ahead. I think you know what I'm saying.
I do. They are, they are aligned, because if you look at our mission and our vision statements, and our student pledge that we say every day, um, their work is aligned, but it comes from different areas, and, um, I can't remember if we are presenting on information about that tonight or at a, at a later date, but, um, we do have a graphic that explains, and I can actually put it in my weekly this week, so you guys can see it, um, that shows where each of their pieces comes together around that goal. Um, so we need the culture, but we also need the instruction, and I would see Inspire Citizens as more, um, more like pushing those curriculum maps and pacing guides into a global perspective, and Dr. Mohammed is more, um, bringing it down to like, why are we doing this, and, and how are we living the mission that we say we're living, and how are we giving that then to our students through our tasks?
Any questions from, from board members? Dr. Jackson, you have any feedback at all?
Yes, Dr. Spalding?
Yes, I'm here, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, and for, uh, Dr. Mohammed, what were some of the comments that you received back, and what were your thoughts on his, um, training for us?
I do know that there was a survey we provided to the staff, um, right after Institute, and he's someone, as Dr. Betts mentioned, that, um, really forces us to think, uh, more, more than we probably do routinely about equity. We say equity, we talk about equity, but it's really about getting to the core of what our staff really believe equity looks like, um, on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the clarity, both of you all. Um, if there are no additional questions for board members, roll call, please.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We need a recommendation to approve first read of Press Plus Issue one oh four.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the first read of Press Plus Issue one oh four, adopted as presented by IASB, and five-year review.
In a second, please?
Board Member Williams Wilford, I second.
Any comments or concerns regarding this first read plus issue? Policy Committee? Dr. Jackson, or both?
No huge policy changes of the review, and, um, just part of one oh four. Nothing huge that stands out.
Mr. Dawson, any feedback?
No, I think it's, uh, I think with the five-year review, you know, most of it was, there was nothing that we had a, a problem with, and as far as, uh, the, the new procedures, I think that they are standard fare that we had already been seeing due to COVID, especially, uh, the school board meeting procedures and pandemic preparedness. We either talked about these coming down the pipe, or, you know, we're already having these things in place.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, roll call, please.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We now need a motion to approve first read of Press Plus Issue one oh five.
Board Member Williams Wilford, I make a motion that the board approve the first read of Press Plus Issue one oh five. These particular policies, as listed, are as adopted as presented by IASB.
In a second, please?
Brian Dawson, I second.
Any comments from the Policy Committee regarding, uh, this first read?
No, just, um, policies related to making it a safe environment to work in, as well as, um, a safe environment for children.
Mr. Dawson? Any?
Said it all. I said it all.
Okay. Any more questions from board members at all? Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
And Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Item number twelve, we need to approve the first, uh, the first read Press Plus with edits. One of the Policy Committee members, uh, make this motion, please.
Uh, Brian Dawson, I recommend the approval for first read of Press Plus one oh five, adopted as presented with district edits.
In a second, please? Um, second, thank you. Any comments, please, Policy Committee members?
I'm sorry, on my working agenda, I don't see the policy under that particular area. Not overlooking that.
Is it on top? Let me look, I'm looking too, because it's okay, go on the top.
And I apologize, I didn't see it till now, so I apologize when I bring it up earlier.
But there's separate, uh, there's separate motions anyway. Uh, but I'm looking, uh, but, but is it on there, the edits? Or is it the exact same? Let me just.
Right, I don't see the exact po- the policies that was the district edit, so may need to table this one.
All right, then we'll have to table that one until it's not an issue, of course. We can table it until next board, board meeting, uh, Policy Committee? Right? No, no, no rush on it, correct?
There are a few that we may have to get in before that, and those are included in the Title Nine new changes and adoptions with the federal requirements.
So it's something that can't be tabled till next board meeting in October without an issue?
It cannot. The law wanted to affect August fourteenth.
Okay, so that means we'll have to have a special board meeting if we need to, to complete it? Okay? It's about the only way we can, um, what's the date that it has to be approved?
By the second read, uh, in October. We already have forms, uh, from the attorneys, as well as, uh, from IASB. Will, the administrators will be attending the training as well on that. Um, and so right now, they know that this is a lot for school districts, and so they don't have a hard deadline, but they do, um, ask that you have this implemented as quickly as possible.
Okay, since there's no specific deadline, is it, uh, does it prevent you from going to the meeting, or is there any other inertia concerning? If the board approves it, you know, we know it's gonna be approved by our board, we just want to see the edits.
And that could be done quickly, so it's no problem.
I just meant, do you think that we can? Do we have to have a special board meeting? If we do, I just want to know, um, but if you think it can be tabled, if there's no specific date, and you all can still go to the trainings, um, I'm just asking whatever you all feel, any feedback from the Policy Committee, or Dr. Jackson, I'm not sure in this area, but, um, if there's no specific dates, then.
I'll defer, this is Board Member Williams Wilford, I'll defer to Dr. Jackson, but it's one of those policies that, when it came at our doorstep, it's like, it's already due to be, um, in place, so it's one of those kind of policies, so I'll defer to whatever Dr. J says, Jackson says.
Maybe, this is Cheryl Griffin, can you not just go ahead and open up for?
Can't hear you.
And get this out, and get it done? I don't see why this should be a big thing where it would have to linger. Just get us the, uh, what the, what the edits were, and it shouldn't be a problem for us to get form to get it to approve it.
Right, thank you so much, Ms. Griffin. Uh, Mrs. Suarez, did you include the edits? Were they not on the agenda, or were they on board book?
Hi, yes, so, um, in the working agenda, the edits are not in there, but in board book, they are attached, um, so you will see all five with the district edits that were spoken of, well, that were spoken, um, during the Policy Committee meeting. So in board book, um, they are attached in there, yes.
So were they posted on the agenda that was posted at the district door and, uh, on the website?
The actual policy, is that what you're referring to? The policy is not posted. The agenda does get posted. The attachments are viewable, and have been viewable since Friday with that policy and those changes in board book.
Do they have to be posted on the wall? Is that something that's for the, for the, you know? Does it have to be posted, or does it just have to be read and reviewed by board members?
I think for transparency purposes, especially since this is one of those policies that the government has required that it go into effect back in August. And we've always done it that way, like listed the policies, like we did this one prior to. I think for transparency, it would be of interest to probably make sure it's listed.
Okay.
Prior to approving it. That's just being one of seven.
The policies were listed, Board President, on the actual agenda. So I'm not sure what it is, can't see. So it's on the actual agenda, it's very transparent on there. As far as the district edits, that's attached, because since we can't make that public, because it's not, it hasn't been board approved. As soon as we get the board approval is when I can make the final edits and push that through IASB. As of right now, since I don't have an adoption date by the board, I can't make that public right now.
Okay, I think you answered my question there. If it's posted on the door, on that agenda, then that answers the question.
Does that mean that we can approve this motion, or does that mean that we have to table it?
If it's posted on the agenda that's on the school door, and it's posted wherever they posted the agenda, then we fulfill the requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Dr. Jackson, you support that as well?
I do.
Okay. All right. So we need any further discussion? I think we, we, I think, thank you for the discussion. It saved us a special board meeting, so I appreciate all that information from all parties involved. Roll call, please.
Yes. Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Board member Williams Wolford?
Yeah.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yeah.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Mr. Baranek, ready for your discussion on K-12 solar school programs grant?
Good evening, Board, administrators, and community members. I did receive information from board member Williams Wolford about an opportunity to potentially get a solar grant for the school district. I did go into the K-12 solar grant application and submitted on behalf of Lindop. If we look at the picture that is in the agenda here, there was a light pole that was hit by a car that got fell over, that fell over. I believe that was in early June. But that would be the perfect location to put that solar panel, which is the picture directly in the left, as it would get direct sun pretty much all day long. And this would be able to then be used as a learning tool for our middle school students out there. As far as the timeframe to figure out if we would receive this grant, it's going to take about three months for them to process the grant, but it is a great opportunity. They tried to get the $6,500, which would be roughly the cost of putting in that solar pole that is on the left here in the picture. Is there any questions in regards to the solar grant submittal?
No question regarding, this is Cheryl Griffin, no question regarding the submittal, and I thank you and Mrs. Wolford so much for this. But my question would be, is seeing as how it's in a, the position would be great, but there would be something to protect it against, say, another incident that happened with the light pole?
We would probably have to look into then something maybe like a guardrail on that sidewalk, potentially, so that it could potentially stop any car from coming over the curb and doing that. Obviously, that would be, if we get the grant and move forward with it, we probably would have to look into potentially putting some sort of guardrail up to protect it from that.
Right, that was my only concern. I think it's a great idea, it's just that you'd hate for that much money to be impacted through an accident.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Baranek. Thank you for the suggestion, Ms. Williams Wolford. Update on 2021?
You're welcome. It was something I actually read in our comment bill, and I thought, well, why not? You know? So I'm glad it seems like it's going to work out for the district.
Yeah, we hope so. Ninety percent is really, really good. Ten percent is, it's really good. Moving right along, update on 2020, maybe I should start reading my light bill. That's what that means, right, Mrs. Wolford? Thanks a lot. I'm just kidding, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving right along, the update on 2021, tenure teachers?
Yes, our tenure teachers are Mr. Christopher Champion, our PE teacher, and Mr. Tyler Hanson, our fourth grade teacher. And I remember sitting in the interviews with both of them and making some very good strides and having some good additions to the Lindop family. Both of them have been incredible employees. They're always willing to go above and beyond, very creative, very innovative, very flexible, good relationships with the parents, anything that you can ask for. That's what they try to do. And so I just wanted to let you know who our tenure teachers were for this year. You also have in board book a list of the tenure teachers for prior years. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I see a chat from Ms. Williams Wolford. If I get this chat going, let's see if it's going down. Mine's not moving down, but she said, "Congratulations to the two tenure teachers." That was from Mrs. Williams Wolford. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Champion and Mr. Hanson for choosing Lindop, because they definitely great additions. Thank you for staying and standing with us. Thank you very much. If there are no further comments, we'll move on to old business. Need a recommendation to adopt the budget, please?
Board member Vicki Arrington, I make a motion that the board approve to adopt the fiscal year 2021 budget.
I second the motion. Are there any additional questions? If there are none, roll call, please.
Board member Williams Wolford?
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yeah.
Board member Griffin?
Yeah.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Perfect. And Ms. Taylor stepped out already. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. I need an update, and so be update and presentation on remote learning from the administration, as well as union leadership.
Good evening again, and I'm excited about this presentation. Everyone has worked extremely hard, and I know that the board, as well as everyone really across the nation, is just very concerned about our students and their learning, and what they are, not only what they're losing, but what they're gaining, coming through remote learning. So there's been a challenge to the Lindop staff to really compete with the video games. And with video games, we have Lindop's School District 92 teachers to meet the challenge. And so without further ado, let's begin the presentation.
Good evening again, Board of Education and community. In this remote phase of instruction, it seems like we've been able to really push harder at some of the initiatives we've been working on in person for so long. And so in many ways, this has been a really positive experience for some of us. Three things that we should know about the instructional programming. We're really pushing the small groups, so even though we're getting into big Zoom sessions, we're doing a lot with breakout sessions and then smaller groups later on. We are working very closely as teams, the grade-level teams, and even interdisciplinary teams, where we might have someone from the specials coming in to help plan. We have the special education teachers there. We have our instructional assistants in these planning meetings. And everybody is working together very closely in order to roll out really good instruction for the students. And the third thing is that, like you saw with Ms. Bell's presentation in the Spotlight on Success, we're practicing interdisciplinary strategies, which means multiple content areas might be focusing on the same thing at the same time, but viewing it through their academic lens for their content area. And some other examples of that are WASD. So some of the STEAM stuff that we've done is all interdisciplinary, and we continue to be able to push that out through art this year. Ms. Bell's newspaper is an example of it, because she used a lot of social studies work in there. She did research, she created action items, there was synthesis in the thinking, there were SEL components. And so when all of these things come together, it helps us to see something, see a concept in a discipline in a more widespread way. Next slide, Josh.
Good morning, Board of Ed and community members. So just to touch briefly on our, on our special services programming, starting with our English learners. Just to give some context, that we're very fortunate to have staff members who are certified as English, teaching English as a second language. So in the areas in which that we utilize at our pre-K through second grade, third through eighth, and then we have two specialists as well that have ESL endorsements. Also, just, you can see on the slides, the multiple languages that we have in Lindop, not just Spanish, even though Spanish is the majority of our student population. We have currently 37 students who are enrolled in our English language program. And then we also have an English language coordinator who works in two ways. One, in supporting the grade levels that do not have a certified ESL teacher, and providing direct English language support. And then the other way is as a coach to those that are certified in ESL, but providing them best practices, sound, and also acting as a soundboard for feedback as well on instruction for those students. In terms of special education, we actually went down our special education population from the end of the school year to this year, we were down 30 students. You know, it is based upon eighth grade population graduated, which had a large number of students with IEPs. Also, we had students that disenrolled from the district as well. So we have a 30% decrease in that. In terms of our related service staff, in particular, as we look at providing services in the area of social, emotional learning, well-being, our fabulous social worker, Ms. Ko, her current caseload this year is 35 students. And caseload is determined by students that are required to receive social work minutes per their IEP. This has gone down, obviously with the decrease in students. She decreased in her overall caseload by about 15 students. And moving forward this year, you know, we just want to make sure that we can provide that for, for everyone. And all the work that Ms. Ko does, she's also, we can even tell liaison, also works with students that are in general education population that need social work for support for, via parental consent.
Good evening, Board of Education, and to our attendees and panelists. This is Dr. Spalding. Thank you for this opportunity to share in the presentation. So as Dr. Jackson mentioned, everyone in the country is really concerned about student learning. And we know that our parents are truly our primary partners in this endeavor. And so we're providing supports, and they can kind of be categorized in these four buckets, keeping our families and parents connected, providing resources, communicating, and motivating. Next slide. So connecting. Then ask Mr. Graff to give an overview, overview of the mental health resources. We'll share a little bit about a parent directory, Mr. Kenobi, with PTSO. And then we'll also talk about extended outreach efforts, because we know that that is key during this turbulent time. Next slide.
Thank you, Dr. Spalding, and to the Board of Education and all attendees for allowing me to speak on behalf of LTA and all of the great work that we are doing here at Lindop as we open school remotely this fall. As we know, this graphic says it all, mental health really does matter. It includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects not only how we think, but also how we feel and act. It helps to determine how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. We believe that intentional supports for our families and students and staff is more important now than ever before. We have continued to focus on the well-being of all our stakeholders, knowing that the supports we provide will help to bring a balance, reduce stress, and help our community to feel united despite being distanced this fall. Next slide.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education, and teachers and staff and guests. PTSO update, PTSO now has had two meetings this year. We're expecting more and more turnout. We've had more and more people turn out, staff members, including new parents as well. In terms of the parent directory, it's the first time ever that we released a parent directory. PTSO has shared a link on ClassDojo this week that gives directions to parents to access the link for PTSO to give the directory out. That way, we can keep tracker of which parents and how many of, of parents do access the directory. Also, we do have over 300 names on that directory, and these are names of students who parents during the registration process gave permission to release their information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenobi and Mr. Graff. And in addition to those two efforts you just heard about, we're also working extremely hard to keep our families connected by having systems internally so that we are effective with connecting what we call hard-to-reach families. So this initiative is truly born out of our intense effort to make sure that no child is left behind during these historic times. So staff make every effort to reach families and connect with all of their students. But when that doesn't work, for whatever reason, staff complete this Google form so that administration and resource staff can ramp up the efforts to reach and/or contact families or caretakers to ensure that parents and students' needs are being met. The outcome may result in a personalized solution for specific student needs. Case in point, we have a middle school student who was not attending remote sessions on Thursdays, and we discovered that that student was with their grandparent for dialysis. And so we needed to create a special plan for that student, and we were only able to discover that by having ramped up efforts to contact caretakers and parents during this historic time. We know that families are working extremely hard. Some of our parents are in high-risk positions and are not frequently at home when their students are engaging in remote instruction. And so all of us have been sprinkled with a little bit of social work sauce, if you will, because we all have to make extra efforts to really find out what our families need. And this is one way to do that. I'm going to bounce it back over to Mr. Graff to talk about a particular partnership committee.
Hello again. One great connection I would like to share with you this evening is the opportunity for our bilingual families to take part in the Proviso Township Super Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee. It's called "Super" because all of the districts in Proviso Township come together to create a shared bilingual space for learning, networking, and reflections. This is extremely important and super powerful for our families. The opportunity gives new meaning to District 209's motto, "One team, one goal, one Proviso." We are committed to providing a unified experience for our We are committed to providing a unified experience for our growing bilingual population. Next slide. But I'm even more excited to share with you how we will be reaching our bilingual community locally here at Lindop this year. We are creating a language exchange for our bilingual families, and this will be extended to our bilingual families outside of our Spanish-speaking families. It will provide the families a safe place to practice English, learn about Lindop and the greater awesome Broadview community. This idea came from one of our bilingual families who just wanted a place to improve and gain comfort in speaking English. I'm hopeful that this more relaxed format, rather than a structured adult ESL class, will gain interest, build confidence and make a true impact on our bilingual families. Next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Graff. So in addition to connecting our families, we want the Board of Education to know that we're also providing ample resources for students to engage in remote learning. Next slide. So the Bernie's Book Giveaway provides, they distribute quality children's books to increase ownership among underserved infants, toddlers and school-aged children. So we know that two out of three low-income students have no books of their own. And under Ms. Dodaro's guidance, our reading interventionist, Bernie's Book Bank has blessed our students with books. And we were on the waiting list for more than a year, and this summer we found out that our name had been chosen. So since the start of COVID-19, Bernie's Book Banks have distributed nearly 800,000 free books, and Lindop is on that list. So we are grateful to Ms. Dodaro, and this is a picture of Mr. Kenobi spearheading the distribution during the grab and go. Parents have been extremely thankful for the opportunity to build the students' home libraries. Next slide. In addition to books, we want to thank the Board of Education. This is just a screenshot, a sample of many of the thanks that you received on Class Dojo. The Broadview community was extremely grateful for providing all the students with school supplies for this 2020 remote learning window. Families were greatly appreciative for those materials. So thank you, thank you, thank you to the Board of Education and to Dr. Jackson for this awesome idea. It was greatly received and truly appreciated. Next slide. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kenobi to talk about the remote learning tools as well as grab and go, other resources that we're providing to keep our families engaged.
Thank you, Dr. Spalding. Just some of the tools that we are utilizing for the remote learning window. One being a lot of you know of is Class Dojo, very important form of communication between the parents and the staff and students. But as well as it's being utilized more as educational in terms of being able to provide certain links as well as portfolios that students can upload videos, very, very essential. We also have distribution of the iPads and Chromebooks as well as iXL for various math and science, Study Island Epic, Alexia Core 5. Of course, Google Classrooms for the virtual setting, Go Guardian to monitor students as well as communicate with students, News ELA and Accelerated Reader, to name a few, but very, very essential tools during the remote window. And parents absolutely love the communication, the pictures and the communication again on Class Dojo. Next slide. Daily Grab and Go is from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Monday through Fridays. Grab and Go is utilized for parents and students. Lunchroom monitors as well as lunch staff do participate in this program and coordinate the Grab and Go curbside. This window is also utilized for school supplies as well as device repair or tech support. So as parents are coming in and out from 8:00 to 12:00, they can have their needs met on various levels and also get food provided to them. So just a great opportunity on a day-to-day basis that our lunch staff does participate and help out with. Thank you. Next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Kenobi. In addition, Board of Education, to connection and provision, we're also focused on increased communication. Next slide. Mr. Kenobi and I host daily office hours for our parents, and then we host a separate office hour for our staff virtually. We've created school-wide classroom that allows us to instant message any and every parent in Class Dojo. We were also inspired by Pre-K's webpage, and they tutored Mr. Kenobi and I, where we created our own administrative pages that has interactive links. You can see the images there at the bottom and find them on our new website. We've also continued the PJ and Coffee forums. I believe we've hosted about seven or eight during the summer while we were trying to garner parent and community input about decisions and recommendations around those decisions. And this fall, we've also continued them to garner parent input and feedback about how the remote learning process and that experience has been for them and their students. Typically, we have attendance anywhere from 40 to 80 parents. Our guardians and staff members have also attended. So we will continue to provide increased opportunities for communication. Next slide. And lastly, in addition to connection, provision and communication, we know it is absolutely important to find ways to motivate our students. But now we're not only motivating our students, we're also motivating our parents. So we kicked off the school year by asking parents to send us pictures of student workspaces. Next slide. We were attempting to create a trend that would hopefully become popular, and the topic, it took off pretty well. It sparked some excitement in our families with protecting workspaces in their homes so that we could focus learning during remote instruction. So it took off pretty well. Also, during one of our parent forums, Mr. Kenobi and I invited students to help us find some creative ways for celebrating those students who were rocking remote learning. We know that we are returning to grades and attendance in a different way than we were in the spring while we were managing the crisis. And so seventh graders Jerel, David and Jordan Shorter joined forces with us to create the Lindop Student Outreach Committee. So here's Jerel, David, excuse me, Jerel, David and Jordan. Jerel's going to show just a snippet more about this committee, which is created and student-led. Jerel?
Thank you so much, Dr. Spalding. Thank you to the Board of Education for having me here today. It is an honor and a privilege. So yeah, I'm Jerel David. This will be my third committee I'll be working on at Lindop. I've held positions at Lindop as chairman of the Health Squad and co-chairman of this committee. Also, when we introduced under initiative, I was student ambassador dehondre, and I was also elected to commissioner of ecology. My colleague was, cannot be here today. Unfortunately, she had something planned. And it is, it was just a wonderful thing that we came up with, and we wanted to motivate students to keep working through this hard time. Our slogan is motivating leaders of today to stay strong for tomorrow. So we're really here to keep those students who are doing great in e-learning to do amazing in e-learning. We're trying to get them to work super duper hard, and we're giving them rewards so they can stay motivated during this tough time.
Next slide, Mr. Olesky. Next slide. I'm sorry, back to the last slide. I apologize. Thank you. Jerel, was that it?
Yeah, this is my co-chair. She, this is, will be her first committee, but she has wonderful leadership. We have a wonderful team built of students that we saw potential in and that we believe can grow. So yeah, we're ready to take this onboard, and our first launch is on September 18th, that Friday. And we're ready to go motivate our students to stay strong and the Broadview committed, community to stay strong.
Thank you, Jerel. And so the committee assists of administration, teachers and the students that Jerel mentioned. And Mr. Kenobi and I will assist them with making surprise visits to students' homes in order to deliver some very wonderful treats to recognize their efforts during the remote window. And we're very sure that the parents will be appreciative of that as well, because it's hard to know who sees you when you're only showing up in a Zoom chat. But we want them to know that we see them and will deliver those gifts COVID-safe in a COVID-safe way with social distancing. But we will record it and hopefully share some of that on the website. The other thing that we're doing to motivate our students, and thank you to Jerel and to Jordan.
I do want to say thank you very much, Dr. Jerel. We appreciate your report. Thank you so much. You're very articulate. Very articulate. So proud to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Board President.
Awesome. Additionally, we partnered again with Mr. Stephen Hunter to provide the Stephen Hunter Camp Experience. You may recall that Mr. Hunter provided a grant last summer so that we could enhance our summer school with the WASD engineering experiences for our student. Well, he's back, and Coach Champion and Coach Nichols have spearheaded this partnership so that about 80 students are participating in a weekly coaching session with an NBA, former NBA player. So they're learning NBA moves, and they're also discussing perseverance and other really important life skills. And all of this is done remotely, and every student who has registered will receive a brand-new basketball and also cones so that they can participate effectively with the drills. So we want to thank Dr. Jackson for maintaining that partnership and to Coach Champion and Coach Nichols for working out all the details. Next slide. And last, but definitely not least, we know that motivation today is also possible by addressing some of the current social issues. This is especially true for our middle school students. So the administration has taught ways to involve students around Black Lives Matter issues, voting registration with When We All Vote, which is a nonpartisan, not-for-profit organization with a mission to increase participation in every election. And so the school will be launching specific voter registration days, and we have submitted our paperwork so that we can have a voice in our community to encourage people to vote. Additionally, we are continuing to promote the Census 2020 and the completion of that. If you haven't had a chance to look at the video, Jerel gave a wonderful response of what it means to be a patriot. He and about six other seventh and eighth grade students raised the Black Lives Matter flag half-staff. It's outside of Lindop School. If you haven't had an opportunity to drive by, that happened on last Thursday in honor of Patriot Day last Friday. You know, typically we have the entire parking lot full of veterans and first responders, and due to the COVID circumstances, we were unable to do that. But we tried to find some creative ways to keep our students engaged and to let them have a voice during these turbulent times. So we're looking for ways to motivate our students by having them become more of an activist than maybe they have been in the past. And the same is true for for staff and administration. I believe, the last slide, Mr. Kenobi, I'll turn it back to him for motivation.
Thank you, Dr. Spalding. We are Lindop Initiative. This is a really cool idea that came to fruition recently in the last few weeks. We are Lindop, so the Lindop staff has been sending in videos. We are compiling We Are videos with the staff, and what we're going to do is on open house night, we will play the video for the parents, and we will challenge the videos to, challenge the parents to send in their own video clip of We Are Lindop. And what we're going to do is compile the staff and parents into one mega film and have that on our website, We Are Lindop, as a fun, community engagement, fun activity to do. So here's a little sample that from Pre-K that we're going to play for you that shows a little bit about it. So that's a little example, and as you can see, they'll hand from the left to the right, and it's supposed to symbolize that we're handing our sign-off to the next person. So we'll show you the finalized version as soon as it's done, but that's what we're working on right now, fun little community engagement project that we're really psyched up about. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from board members? I do want to thank again Dr. Jerel for being here today as well as the entire administrative team. One thing that is so, it's just great to hear and to confirm that our children can learn despite COVID-19. Yes, we yearn for in-class learning, but our children and staff members and administrators are safe as well as our faculty. But you all evidence to us, you know, all the hard work you do and the fight you have to keep learning at the forefront despite COVID-19 and the challenges of remote learning. So just thank you so much. If there's any other comments from any other board members, go right ahead.
I really, this is Vicky Arrington, board member. I really appreciated this presentation, this one in particular, to give us the greatest of insight on how things are going remotely. Clearly, we wouldn't know. We see something like this. I think you did. You all did a great job in putting this together to give us that great insight. And I just think we're very fortunate to have you all. I think you're doing a wonderful job with it with the circumstances being what they are.
Okay, there are no further comments. We're going to move right along. And last but not least, Dr. Jerel, please don't forget us when you become famous. Okay, moving right along the old business. I'll take that back. We need a staffing update, please. Dr. Spalding? Staff update?
Yes, Dr. Spalding is just going to talk about some of the creative things she has done with staffing and particularly in some of the areas that we had vacant before. Dr. Spalding?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Good evening again to the Board of Education. So as we know, oftentimes there can be the summer surprise in terms of staffing turnover and needing to think deeply about who we can put in positions and short timeframes is something that no administrator likes to deal with. But we were able to extend a partnership that we had already began creating with Dominican University. As you know, we have two paraprofessionals that are currently in the alternative licensure program. Ms. Blake and Ms. Triplet were each paraprofessionals. Ms. Triplet was the pre-K para, and Ms. Blake was the fourth grade, excuse me, the third grade para, but she also did a maternity leave in fourth grade. This past February, they each received admittance into the Dominican University, a fantastic teaching program. And they have begun their coursework and taken care of their preliminary obligations so that we were able to put them into vacancies. So Ms. Blake is now in the classroom with Ms. Lori Christensen after 35 years, and she's the new second grade teacher. And then Ms. Triplet is in the sixth grade science position. Ms. Bell, who you heard earlier this evening, that did the phenomenal job with our students, and as a librarian, her passion is truly writing and having a voice. And she stepped into the eighth grade role on a temporary basis. So we are looking and searching for a high, highly qualified candidate for that eighth grade position so that Ms. Bell can continue to spread her wings as a librarian and have an impact on all the students. But right now she's doing a fantastic job there. And so we just were able to move some people around and find creative ways to address the needs of our kids. Because at the end of the day, excellence has still got to be the standard, even though we're remote. But we feel real good about these individuals, and they're working extremely hard to build routines, connect with our families and just do, do what they have to do to make us proud. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to just kind of be creative and move some people around.
Thank you very much, Dr. Spalding. Are there any questions from board members? If not, we'll move on to the recommendation to hire the Triton College intern. What I would like to say is that this personnel issues are generally in closed session, but that would be our only item on the agenda. And generally, student interns are sometimes pretty routine. You see all the information out there in regards to the cost and the finances and his pay. But the, his resume was on board books. Hopefully, everybody had the opportunity to review it. And so the questions really can't be targeted towards those personal questions, but if you have any, if hopefully you'll support approving this Triton intern that can really help right now, especially with the, during the time of COVID. I know last year's intern was significant. So if there's no hesitation or any concern, we need to record a most- So if there's no hesitation or any concern, we need a rec, a motion, please, to approve the hire of the Triton intern.
This is Board Member Brian Dawson. I recommend the approval to hire Triton College intern Ishmael Ruiz to assist Mr. Ellisky with technology task at $15 per hour with a maximum pay of $3,600, of which $1,200 will be reimbursed by Triton College for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Arrington. Thank you, thank you both. Any, any further discussion or questions about, uh, anything that you see that's posted on the agenda? If there's not, uh, roll call, please.
Board Member Jonah Herrod?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
And I believe Mr. Taylor and Ms. Williams left.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Board President's report. Okay. Just to me, mention, um, because of COVID-19, there, the, the West Cook, um, Fall Division Meeting is virtual and it's going to be a combination of, um, we're going to, we're going to be combined with Three Rivers, uh, Division. And just wanted you to save the date of Thursday, October 29th, 2020. During that particular meeting, we'll also, uh, you'll see, uh, you'll hear the board members that are receiving their awards for, uh, the training that they've done over the year. So those awards will be presented at that time. Not to mention, uh, if there are people in the community that are interested in serving on the board, there's also, you'll see, we'll get more information about virtual training for board members who are interested in serving, uh, as board members, um, with the election, new elections coming up in April of 2021. Okay? That concludes my report. And thank you, moving right along to the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Garrett. We'll go right here, okay, to Borgo Number Two Facility. So an update on the playground, uh, we talked about some, uh, concerns that we had with the playground and making sure that we were in compliance. We went ahead this, uh, summer and had that done. Mr. Valentine, are you here?
Yes, I'm here, Dr. Jackson.
Okay, could you talk a little bit about the playground and, uh, update the board on the process this summer?
Sure, good evening, board, community and staff. Recently, last school year, we had the playground surface tested, uh, safety drop test and it was borderline results, uh, so this summer we got the playground surface refinished, uh, turned out great. Uh, we had one little hiccup where it was a footprint inside the surface. The company actually be out tomorrow to repair that damage at free of cost, of course. So it was just on two playgrounds and, uh, on the south side of the building where the safety surface that was poor.
Thank you for that. Um, and we've just been very busy this summer. Can you go to the next slide? Don't go anywhere, Mr. Valentine.
Oh, yes, uh, Dr. Jackson, this is the parking lot. Normally we contract this out and get the parking lot, we striped this year, we did it in-house and it turned out great. We didn't, we, we didn't, we do the blacktop itself, we just get all the parking spots, uh, lines and curves.
And finally, something that we will all be able to enjoy soon.
Yes, we are in the process of changing the, the basement area into a fitness center for us, for the staff. Uh, right now, we just got the flooring redone this week, finished up, I'm sorry, finished up last week. It's an epoxy floor, it's very durable. I think that's the best, uh, type of flooring for a basement area. This week, we're in the process of painting the room and, uh, replacing all the baseboards, ceiling tiles and the light fixtures. Any questions?
How about the water? Have we addressed that water down there? The seepage?
Yes, yes, uh, yes, uh, Madam President, we did, uh, we found out the major issue for the water coming inside the building. There was a buried sub pump, uh, in the front of the building. Over the years, it was buried by the landscaping, so we found that and replaced the sub pump. So we don't get water down there, uh, we do get some minor seepage in other parts of the basement, but that's, that's, uh, that was resolved as well. That was a threshold that we, we had to replace, but so far, everything is working great.
Thank you so much, that's good news.
Cheryl Griffin, I would like to say that you guys have done an excellent job. I've seen the parking lot and with what you've done in the basement, all I can see, what a great work.
All right, if we go to the next slide. Go to the next one. All right, um, here's something that, uh, we hear about quite frequently, but we never get tired of. Mr. Ellisky.
Good evening, Board of Education, community members, staff. So we got, uh, a couple of months ago, we asked the board to approve break priority two and we just received our funding of $15,566.86. What that's going to cover is 55, uh, subscriptions to our Wi-Fi signals. That's just software based and, uh, they're going to give us 14 UPS, UPSs, which are a lot for backup battery for our servers, internet, software battery in case electricity goes out. And so Lindop's cost is going to be $3,255.6. Questions?
Congratulations and great job. Absolutely.
No, that wasn't me, that was Dr. Jackson, but congratulations and great job.
Absolutely.
Yes, I was just saying, congratulations, Mr. Ellisky, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ellisky, thank you so much, you always save us so much money. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I enjoy it.
We do too.
Next, coming soon, uh, Broadview Strong Census 2020. As you know, we've developed a partnership, uh, with the village and have been assisting in making sure that we get the word out about the Census 2020. You heard, um, the team speaking about it earlier and specifically, uh, Dr. Spalding has been leading that charge. We will have on Tuesday, September 22nd, and let me just go back for a moment. Some of you may be aware that she's been having pop-up, uh, census meetings and sign-ups. And so those have been going particularly well. We had a conversation, uh, there was one scheduled for September 22nd and we talk about collaborating and making sure that we could do something Broadview Strong right in Lindop's parking lot. And I thought, what a great opportunity. We would be able to have additional people sign up for the census. Uh, Dr. Spalding is going to provide some incentives, uh, for parents who attend and are able to, uh, confirm or show proof that they have participated and completed the census. Uh, there are going to be some games and some different activities, uh, for the children. Uh, socially distanced, uh, people will be required to wear masks. It is going to be wonderful and this is going to be, um, all provided and sponsored by the Village of Broadview. And it will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
Uh, this is Cheryl Griffin. Is there anyone we should contact if we're available to assist with anything that's going on that day?
The mayor, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list, Dr. Spalding, um, and Mr. Kenobi, as well as the students. And you'll see the different people who, uh, participated in the 9/11 tribute in our Patriots Day. It was outstanding and this will be the conclusion of my report. Can you go to the next slide? Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Ellisky. And actually, um, you all will receive a full copy of, uh, the video and the other video that we had mentioned earlier. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you for that great report, Dr. Jackson. Moving right along to committee reports. Beginning with the finance meeting that we had September 10th, 2020. Mrs. Arrington?
Yes, and it so happens that all the agenda items that were on that meeting were discussed in today's meeting. With this new 2021 budget, the Triton intern and the K through 12th, um, solar, uh, program grant.
Thank you very much, Ms. Arrington. There was no personnel meeting? Pace Board meeting, Mr. Dawson and Ms. Griffin, Mr. Dawson?
Uh, yes, we have a upcoming Pace Board meeting this Thursday. Uh, as you know, everyone might imagine, Pace has some of the similar situations that we do as far as, you know, uh, remote learning, uh, challenges that they are, uh, dealing with and overcoming. Uh, I think the biggest thing right now is, uh, we're just still looking for a, uh, bus company. Obviously, it's not necessary at this point in time because they're remote, but that's the, uh, biggest thing on the agenda right now, just, uh, locking down a, a, a bus company before, um, there is, uh, we resume school in class learning, that's it.
Mr. Dawson, have they, how do they address the occupational and, and, and other therapies that are recommended?
Currently, currently, uh, the children are receiving minutes, uh, it's similar to, to Lindop where, uh, the children are receiving their minutes and they're over the, um, over remote. However, the only one that is not is, um, I believe it's the physical therapies because that is, uh, necessary to kind of be in-person, some of the work that was done in school as far as actually, uh, you know, uh, exercising the children. But even the physical therapists are having minutes where the children, uh, and their, their families are able to, uh, do things over the, over the internet. But I know that they're, they were, I spoke on that specifically at the last meeting and they were saying the only thing that they couldn't do is, uh, some of the physical therapists were providing like, uh, exercising where they were helping the children and that's the only thing that's not being done.
Okay, thank you for that update.
No problem.
Safety SEL, I know that you have one upcoming on October 28th at 5:00 PM. Policy Committee meeting, I know that, um, Mr. Dawson, any, any further information? Or you have one Wednesday, September 9th?
Yeah, we, we went over the five-year review and, uh, the, the first we didn't adopt in our, uh, in our vote earlier. So we already addressed that, I guess.
Thank you so much. Para meeting, the next, uh, meeting is Monday, October 30th at 9:00 AM. Technology meeting did occur today at 4:30. Uh, Dr. Jackson, can you give an update? I know Mr. Ms. Taylor, Mr. Hannah are no longer online.
Yes, and so, uh, we talked about, um, obsolete technology that we would be bringing to the Board of Education. I would bring a recommendation to be able to get rid of those, um, items. We also talked about E-Rate, which was just, uh, mentioned in the report earlier. And then we also, um, talked about having some additional, uh, meetings for software. Is there anything that I left out, uh, Dr. Betts or Mr. Ellisky? I'm sorry.
We just also did an update on issued devices from the 2019, 2020 school year. How we received all the devices back from the previous school year.
Thank you for that information. Okay. There was no community engagement report that, that committee has tabled into further notice? And last but not least, Negotiations Committee, Ms. Griffin?
Sorry about that, hold on one second. I can give you that. For some reason, my screen will not let me minimize, go to my thing, but I brought it up on my phone. Uh, the Lindops Teachers Association contract negotiations were completed on August 4th. The contract is currently in the process of being reviewed by the LTA and hopefully ratified during our October 20th board meeting.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Ms. Griffin. Uh, we just wanted to give, uh, the board team a report, let you know we're close to having that, uh, presented to you all for, uh, approval sooner than later, hopefully by next board meeting. Thank you again, this, Ms. Ms. Griffin. Okay, moving along to public comments. Do we have any new public comments, Ms. Juarez?
No, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Okay. If there's no further to do, I need a motion to adjourn the Lindop School Board of Education meeting at 7:16 PM, please.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I moved at the board, go into closed session.
No, no, adjourn.
Oh, thanks. I moved at the board adjourn.
The meeting at 7:16 PM.
7:16 PM.
And a second, please. Is that you, Mr. A second? Was that you, Mr. Dawson?
I think, uh, Ms. Arrington, uh, sec.
That was Ms. Arrington, thank you, Ms. Arrington. Uh, and a roll call, please.
Board Member, Ms. Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Jonah Herrod?
Yay, motion carried. Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Everyone be safe.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.